Okay, six o'clock. I think it note that Michael Bates is absent and Dave Micas is joining us remotely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we want to do approval of the agenda before us?
Yes, you got that. Slime, you may need to refresh your shuffle on this.
I need a motion. Make a note that again, Michael Bates is absent and Dave's on the phone. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
So the second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you have on your staff first?
Yep, yep. And so while you're booting up there, we're excited to have everybody in the same room, kind of flipping the switch on some normal scene moving forward. And this time, we're going to introduce our new certified staff members. We'll do it by building. And Mr. Brooks, if you would, we'll let you start.
All right. I did do a crib sheet because I've also got some people that aren't new to the district but came to the building or back to the building. So I'm doing them. Lisa Dickens, I hear, is doing chemistry for us. Dustin Elitch, who has football, he's doing self-studies. Girl's basketball coach does the football. Kelsey Camery, there's Kelsey Camery, ag science and FFA. Julie Hernandez is doing Spanish for us this year. Ryan Heil is doing choir, band and cross-country. And along with Doug Schaefer, our new band director and quiz bowl coach, they're both having band practice right now. We have Julie Seber doing ELA. ELA three primarily is her specialty. She also took on junior class sponsor, prom. Thank you. And Brandon Stumpf, he's doing math for us this year. Welcome all of our very new folks to Wright City High School. We're so excited to have those folks with us. And then some other folks that aren't new to the district. Carla Willard, who's here, she's doing EL. She was at East, she's with us now. Devin Rainey, who is actually en route, he's coming back to the meeting, but he had some stuff to do with kids moved from the self-studies classroom to assistant principal. Brent Oldhoff, who came to us mid-spring last year as our SRO, and so fortunate to have him onboard. Not with us this evening, but you know, first time, long time, I don't know if that's right. Becky Breckmeyer, has been with the district a long time. She was in the high school, middle school, she's back with us doing yearbook, a little personal finance and some launch classes. Michelle Payton moved from special education, sorry Kelly, to our counselor position. So we're excited about her, to have her in that role. Stephanie Combs was also somebody that came last, middle of the year in semester. She's our interventionist and she is full-time sub. She subs in the building as well. Very new, Morgan Core is our new admin assistant to the principals, student who was just out of the building just three years ago. It's hard to believe, but that's great to have her. Alex Luter spent splitting time between the middle school and the high school. April Murdock came from the middle school and she's doing biology at the high school now. And I think I got them all. If you liked it, so much love.
Good evening. Glad to introduce Brianna Gupton. She's an afro rosh, she teaches eighth grade math. And she's student taught under Taylor Backus last year, so we're lucky to retain her. Erin Willis is sitting right next to her. She is our new eighth grade science teacher and she comes from Waynesville. And she also coaches volleyball. Right. And then we have Shannon Fesner. She was at our introductions before here and she teaches eighth grade social studies and she also coaches our cross-country team. We have Sarah Meadows, who comes from us from East Elementary as our assistant principal. Joshua Albrechts is our AR teacher and he is coaching boys soccer. And he's not here tonight. We also split with time between the high school with Doug Schaefer. We're lucky to have him run our band program at the middle school. Emily Milner, is she making it up over? Emily Milner is our new counselor. And Janie Wilkins is our new librarian, she's right here. Cody Bear, right here. He teaches PBL, or project-based learning, and he also coaches softball. Chris Schnee, he is our middle school football assistant coach and he is our permanent sub. Janie Mattingly is a special education teacher. She was a special education paraprofessional at the high school. Allison Adams is a paraprofessional with our special education program as well. Elizabeth Norris comes from us from Waynesville, correct?
Yes.
From our, she joins our special education department as well. Jade Karati came from West Elementary and she's a vital member of our special education program. And Dr. Daisy Skelly will be our EL Title III coordinator. So she'll be housed at the middle school, but Title III EL coordinator for the district. Thank you.
All right, our new West teachers are all sitting in a row. They're going to make this really easy for me. Taylor Backus, our new assistant principal that came over from the middle school, she's not here tonight. Right in front of me, we have Emily Audi, she's doing fifth grade reading for us this year. Larea Windsor is doing third grade. Kirsten Sample is split place between East and West. She's our instructional counselor for the social emotional rule program. Next to her is Shannon Bruner, she's covering fourth grade this year. Next to her is Anna Gertis, fifth grade writing. This is her first year teaching. And then next to her is Alia Hammack, coming to us from Hazelwood, and she is teaching third grade. And that's it for West.
We have four first grade teachers that are not able to make it tonight, but Kenya Crawford, Jordan McNulty, Kayla Bittner and Adrian Lamb. Very excited to have them on the team. And then tonight, they were able to make it, Ashley Zuhom. She's our new kindergarten, transitional kindergarten. A whole lot of things going on there, so yeah. We're excited. And then we have our shared staff as well.
Kirsten.
Yes.
I have to make my mouth up.
And that's all we have.
I have two new teachers. Nicole Smith, she's one of our new preschool teachers. She's been a para in our building for four years and I begged her to become a teacher, so here we are. So then I had to hire her, so she's doing an awesome job. So like I said, her, this is her first year. And then Amanda Drews, I don't know how many years I'm in, I don't know, six or seven. Yeah, so she's not new to teaching, but she's coming to us from one of the state schools, so we're glad to have her as well.
We did central office, I don't think we hit. No. No, and what's fun about that is we had a little dinner where board members could sit right with our staff and learn a little bit about each other. And we're still small enough that it's important for the board to see you guys. Who am I missing? Everybody's, I got people mouthing things up, like who am I forgetting? Oh, Elizabeth Thompson, she can come for that. Reasonable Elizabeth Thompson, our digital media specialist. Everybody's looking at me, it's crazy. So thank you guys and for being here and thanks for coming over and joining me with us tonight. So we'll let you off the hook or you're welcome to stay.
So one question, which one of you's from Waynesville again? Can you follow them?
Tell them the sequence there, because that's what I said. I said, no, granted, there's more employees there. I was a little embarrassed, as I was supporting, you had covered the wing, right?
Hey, Elizabeth, I have to tell you a story. I won't tell you right now though, for my needs, about our children.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is first week of school, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, and had board members say, hey, how'd the first week go? And suggest maybe we should have that to attend items since we started on this first week and it's appropriate to be on there. So I had it with nuts and bolts meeting every month that is on the day of the board meeting. And I kind of did it themed up like, kind of by the numbers. So I just asked different departments, you know, the numbers. But one thing that is outside of the numbers but connected is that open houses from each school were very well attended. And in fact, high school, Matt is confident that is the most attended high school in recent history, so.
Unprecedented.
Unprecedented. High school. So that's really good to hear that we're getting off on the right foot, connecting with our parents. For transportation number, 1,300 is our ridership. That may wane a little bit. The more riders we have on the bus, actually, it helps our transportation calculation, so I don't want it to weigh too much, but Dr. Wade said, hey, now we ended at 1,150 last year, but so we're going to be transporting.
Don't transport 1,300.
Yeah. I was wanting to pin him, but it's 1,300, but he's making me nervous. After-school program is off to a good start, so we know that's new. And it's all those things that are done new, I know they often come with a little bit of stumble, and really this has been off for all, off to a great start. We're at the peak number of kids at 50 right now with a waiting list. Fifty-four, Dr. Wade tells me. So with a waiting list. Now, the boys' girls' club, was it girls' club? Yeah. I knew the boys' girls, I was trying to go to America or something, but they are faced with the same challenges we all are with staffing. And they, so we're anxious for them to be able to, you know, as we transition, maybe take on more folks and looking forward to maybe potentially expanding that program. Out of the high school again, marketing two was added. That was part of the pathways and so that was a need and we're not having good attendance in it. Four rivers, again, also part of that pathways or that was a certain part of that conversation. We're up to a good number there, 34. It's not our highest number, but we're, our numbers historically, we're in the twenties. Now we're thinking 30, 34 is probably kind of our baseline now, so we're enjoying that. New program, by the numbers for that new program or new add from the board, you'll remember we did sixth grade sports, meaning that sixth graders can participate up with the middle school now. And currently, we have 15 kids participating, so I anticipate that will double next year. And we'll actually, we're going to likely to do, need those sixth graders for middle school dads even this year, so we'll probably have a bigger number as the year goes on, but that number will definitely get bigger. New employees, and you saw it, 30 new employees on the certified side, non-certified, 10 new employees. So 40 new employees. Much has been talked about food service by the Board of Education and the media. It was a topic after the MSBA blast out yesterday. We currently are at 37%. And our goal that we think is very achievable is 40%. And we were 40% pre-COVID and then when the lunches went free, parents had no incentive to turn in forms and that dropped down into the thirties. We anticipate dropping 5% when the eligibility of those folks that were on last year, they have to turn in a new form. So that 37% counts them in. And Glenn said we usually have about a 5% drop. So we'll do what we put out efforts in terms of communication. I know Elizabeth and I are meeting next week and create a communication plan. We've got till October, first week of October to get our free reduced apps in. That will help us in not just, you know, the most important thing is getting families a free reduced meal, but I know the board is aware that helps several revenue streams, that touches several revenue stream for us. I think 50% is achievable. That's another threshold, because when we get to 50%, there are actually some more benefits. Obviously, the higher percent of free reduced is going to help those revenue streams, but there are some programs that we can get into that the 50% is the threshold. And we don't have to do that on the count day, we can do that any time of the year. So if we ever can get into the 40s and have 50%, you know, inside, we just have to hit 50% one day and that will make it eligible for three years of some new program and that we can introduce to the board for consideration. That would come out and at no cost, so that will get it 40 first.
Can you clarify that? Are you saying 50% of those applications turned in?
No, I'm sorry.
50% qualifying for that?
Yeah, 50% qualifying, yeah.
You think our community would, we would have 50%?
I think if we get to 40, 50 looks like it could be achievable. That is another 10%, and so, yeah, it's out there. And state average usually is about 40% too, to give you some other point of reference. For enrollment, I have some numbers for you, but not the number you're looking for. So in 2018, talking pre-COVID, 1651. So if you're ever thinking, how many K-12 kids do we serve? It's 1650 is pretty safe. But as we went into COVID-19 on September membership, that's still pre-COVID technically, 1655. September of 20 is 1613. And then last year, we came back to our pre-COVID numbers at 1655. So what are we going to be this September? Obviously, we don't know on that count day, but as we look into enrollment right now, we think we're going to be potentially as high as 50. So right now, kind of the nuts and bolts piece of that to work through is we still have kids that are on in our student information system that won't be pulled out until we get request for transcripts from another school. And then those are being pulled out. Those usually get fleshed out in the first couple, three weeks of school and then September will be the official count day for testing. So those days I gave you before are from that official count day. So you know, somewhere between 16, I think 1650 is very safe, maybe as high as 1,700, which is the growth we're expecting. Can I field any specific questions for the board to conclude my superintendent's role?
Awesome, thank you. All right, the Missouri School Board Association Board Review, the last one by Mr. Brinkman. Who takes this place?
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of August. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the opening of a new school year in Missouri. Our public schools will start the new year this month with great anticipation, but in an environment that continues to be challenging. Among those challenges are COVID-19 remaining with us, school districts throughout the state facing serious issues with teacher recruitment and retention, and many students dealing with mental health issues. Yet, school boards, administrators and teachers continue to do the work of educating the 900,000 students in Missouri's public schools. The national superintendent of the year, Missouri's own Dr. Curtis Kane, told board members and administrators attending MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit, "The work may be grueling at times, but it's worth it." He also said, "In the current environment, it's critical that board members and administrators continue to tell the story of public education." And others are filling the void in terms of the narrative, in terms of the story of what we are doing. We have to get back to our road shows, addressing multiple audiences, getting out in the road, on the road, pressing flesh with handshakes, talking to people, sharing factual stories in terms of what's happening within our schools. Not the stuff that people hear on cable news, what's actually happening in our schools, and amplifying what already exists. Kane also said, "It's always important to keep kids at the center of all decision-making." Dr. Kane serves as superintendent in the Rockwood School District in suburban St. Louis. That theme of focusing on what's best for all kids was echoed by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall during her remarks to the recent MSBA Delegate Assembly.
You stay laser focused on what you need to do for your children and for our, our children. Those 900,000 students belong to all of us and we have an equal moral and ethical obligation to make sure that when they finish their education system here in Missouri, they are prepared for their futures.
Randall thanked board members for their service during some of the most challenging times they've ever faced. The state work group charged with studying what's known as competency-based learning has completed its work and issued its recommendations to the State Board of Education. The idea is that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. One of the co-facilitators of the group, Dr. Mike Fulton, presented a session on the issue during MSBA's recent Igniting Great Ideas Summit, and he described the competency-based learning approach.
Public schools exist for a reason, is to provide access for every child in our state to a great education that gets them ready for their future. Competency-based learning is not a program, it's a mindset that you use to solve complex problems that empower students to take control of their lives and be college, career and workforce-ready in ways that are customized to them.
The recommendations of the success-ready students work group include designing a competency-based assessment system for students, designing a competency-based accreditation system for school districts, and expanding business-to-education partnerships. Nominations are open for the Carter D. Award Excellence in Advocacy Award. The award, named for MSBA's former executive director, is presented each year to a local board member who excels at advocating for public education. Nominations for the award, which will be presented at next year's legislative forum, are being accepted through August 31st. There's still time to submit proposed changes to MSBA's advocacy positions. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public and the media where MSBA stands on issues like school board elections, charter school expansion, vouchers and many others. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. The deadline to submit new or revised position statements is August 31st. Join us in Kansas City at the Kansas City Convention Center, November 3rd through the 5th, for MSBA's annual conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersee, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo and much more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You can also register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by MSBA's Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and so long from Columbia.
Anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, we have two individuals who would like to speak in public comments. Frank would like to talk to the agenda item, Wright City High School planning. And so Frank, you want to take your time and speak to us, please?
Sure. So I will, again, try to keep this brief, but kind of going back to COVID and how everybody here researched and looked into and questioned, although many of us have agreed with everybody here, we can at least appreciate and respect the amount of diligence that was put into forming your own opinion. And going back several months, one of the things that I noticed was, as we would talk about the new high school, a lot of the questions and a lot of the outside research that we would talk about doing as related to COVID, didn't seem to come up with discussion in the new high school. We were discussing the changes, the things that were going on. But the first time I was sitting here and I heard the architect mention the cost per square foot, I knew it couldn't be correct. And I knew it couldn't be correct because I knew how much it costs to build a house per square foot. I'm not in commercial construction. But I've got a really good friend who was, and at that same meeting, I am messaging him saying, hey, easy question, what's it cost to build a school? And he's shooting me a couple of numbers per square foot and I knew it wasn't jiving. And again, none of these questions were, or I should say, none of that concept was ever questioned as time went forward. You know, every time we're getting a new presentation, we're seeing a new picture. And I started paying attention. And what I noticed was, from the time the original contract was signed, saying we had $30 million budget, the very first drawing that I defined showed a square footage of 143,000 square feet. Month after month after month, that school's getting smaller and smaller. And I know there are some changes going on and I know there might be some discussion that we're not prepared to. But we ended up, most recently, when I found it was 120,000 square feet. So people talk about inflation and, you know, this recent number and this shocking revelation that it was actually going to cost more than what was originally projected, was just being blamed on inflation. And I actually think it's closer to shrinkflation, which everybody is familiar with at the grocery store, because we actually have two different numbers moving in two different directions. So we have the cost increase of roughly 15%. At the same time, we have a scope project decrease of about 16%, at least just based on raw square footage. And so that would be the equivalent of 100 widgets that cost $100 today, and now we're only getting 84 widgets for $116. And so where my issue lies with this is when we pass these bond issues, you know, we kind of had a image presented to the public that this is what we were going to be getting for our money. And as time has gone on, we're still spending the same money, if not a lot more, but we are getting less and less. And so just as a member of the community, I would appreciate possibly some more questions and maybe questioning the architect a little bit more. Of course, it's probably a bit too late now, but we probably should have had some of these ducks in a row a little bit sooner, realizing that this was a distinct real possibility. Thank you.
Norman, you would like to speak to the tax rate?
Yes. Well, I'm not even close when I live in the suburbs of, right over here, Dalyburg, Commerce. We moved in there late in 2013. One of the things that I noticed, I want anybody to take exception to this, because I have a daughter to teach, to teach here. I have another daughter that works with special students out of four daughters. So I want anybody to take some things back. Next month, the 25th, I'll be 81 years old. I retired in 2006. I've tried and tried to get additional work. I almost have to lie about it to tell them because I graduated from Ferguson High School, which is no longer Ferguson High School. Two years after I graduated, they changed the name. So if I put down Ferguson High School, there's no way to get checked. So I'm going to get back to my subject. On the house over there, I bought, right now, I have to take and refinance it because of taxes, including the firehouse and the other stuff, three times since I've lived here, to keep the taxes down to where I can afford to live there. Because I'm living on social security and a small pension, and she's got a small pension too. Now, back when, several years ago, we had a meeting over at the library where they wanted to put in the junior colleges. And one of the guys, I was talking to one of his fellows over here, kept questioning me and questioning me. And finally, I said, well, how much do you make a year? He wouldn't tell me, but somebody I know told him it was six figures, which is far more than any of my daughters make working where they're working. I had also called up the warranty, I can't remember what Dr. whatever's name was at that time, and I said, it's really not fair, some of the older people ought to get a break. I know they get a little bit of those tools and stuff like that. We ought to get a break on these taxes because we just can't compete, we just can't keep it up. So sooner or later, we have to sell our house or do something like that. So when I was at time, I'm asking, one, is it maybe to set a special age for maybe 75 years old or something like that, where people on social security have a chance to still keep on living without having to sell their house and move into some other type of situation? That's my main question on that deal. The other thing, oh, now you got it. That's the main issue on the thing. Now, the other thing I just asked in relation to what the other gentleman spoke on, and that's on the new high school. Now, I brought this up in a boardroom meeting and boy, they shut down quick. Now, they had what, what, $50,000,000, is that supposed to cost? But I don't remember all the numbers. But that's based on, I have an assessment on my house, that's based on the assessment. Since then, Carter's a realty company, my house has doubled. So whatever I was paying for that amount, I'm going to be doubled on assessment and taxes. And I tried to call San Luis County on this, you know, I was talking about with the junior colleges. They wouldn't talk. They just wouldn't talk to me. So there's going to be a natural fire situation going on for a lot of older people like myself. And they, I want a firehouse, I want my house saved, but I can't pay the taxes. I don't want to move someplace, I'm still active enough, I can't let the old folks home. And I couldn't afford it anyway because they chose, my house payment is now. So all I'm asking is just considering these taxes, maybe some of the older people, it'll break on.
Thank you, Norman. Speaking of tax rate, that's the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, you've got a couple of attachments there. And then I shared a document with, so if you can hear me real quick, sorry, I should give her a heads up. Shared a document, there's a point I want to bring out that was a little bit of an exceptional. that was a little bit of an exceptional issue that occurred this year during the tax rate.
So when you have this conversation, I don't think it's legal for us to set different tax rates for individuals, is it?
It is not, no.
So the idea that he brought up about, well, let's, for anybody studying fire, well, we legally can't do that. Okay, so that answers that question. So.
Did I interrupt you there?
Well, no, well, it's not a conversation right now. We're going to have to talk about it, but we just can't do it.
I was going to hit you, I think, got to repeat to see the, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we get started here. This is the same information that's in the two attachments, but I wanted to put it out in this, this sequence of really underscore one point. If you go to the next slide, please. So that's our tax rate notice, has all the information that gets published in the newspaper. So that first line up there, the 207 million, that's comprised of Lincoln County, Inwarren County's residential, commercial, and agricultural real estate. And then that second line that I circled there, that 64 million, that's the personal property of Warren and Lincoln County. Again, the 271 is the total. So I just want to keep, at least right now, focused to that. And I'll bring up a couple of other things, but this is a point of emphasis. For the first time in my career, I had received the first AV notices and saw a really, really healthy increase in personal property, the number I've got circled there. In fact, that first notice I got was $6 million more than this. And so, and a little finance one-on-ones, a little bit weird is, you'll remember that that value that equates to that $6 million, that's only, the AV is only at 35%, right? So we're talking about somewhere in the middle of $20 million. So from my first notice to the second notice, $20 million was taken off the books. So I dug into that, and that is attributed to Fresco? Don't we?
We can't, we can't, we can't.
Bought our Coca-Cola, and that's out of our district. So that brought up another question, you know, why were we affected? They have warehouses that are in our district, and the new ownership of that, the Fresco, the ownership went in and looked at their personal property, reevaluated and self-reported $20 million less between two notices. That's just a matter of weeks. I've never had anything like that happen before in my entire career. As I called around and, you know, to my network, no one had that happened before except for you get into the urban areas of Kansas City. There's a couple of examples there that I will get into. So how much did that cost us? That cost us $250,000, $271,000. So if you took that $6 million, times our tax rate of 4.45, minus 500, cost us over a quarter of a billion dollars, some of it for operations and some of it in our debt service. So I bring that to your attention because I don't think that's a local assessor issue. Certainly, I've had conversations about that and what the due diligence is at the local level. But that is a greater issue that goes across the state. You know, there are several issues under the topic of values, and certainly personal property, which is self-reported. I'll give you one other example. There's an Air Force base in the building school district that's defunct now, and there are contractors that have moved in there, and they're producing munitions, and they're selling those. And between the different contractors in that site, they are reporting no personal property, none. So they're building, you know, billions of dollars worth of munitions and selling and have no personal property to do that. So there are some ills in our, in our system. And, you know, I was able to share that with Katie and some of my colleagues and executive directors of the pro-ords. We've all been through our batter battles on values, but that's kind of a new one for me. So I put that off the board's radar, only to say, you know, as we're building advocacy positions, and certainly with Mary's connection to the MSBA, that may be something that is resurfaced and needs to be looked at. My understanding is that commercially, every time a big organization, and this one's, you know, not even in the US, takes over something like that, they reevaluate the personal property, they lawyer up for the support to do that, and then they feed it to the assessor. And I think for the most part, at least at the level of life, you know, the assessor is powerless to it. So it's happening in more frequent occurrence. Just place that on your radar. Next slide, please. So I thought this was important, particularly where, you know, with the ESSR dollars. So you'll remember that our historical tax rate, and you've seen this slide before, the big number that we always want to hold in on is that 4.45. And typically, for years, it was 3.25 in the general fund and $1.20 debt service. We changed that in FY '22 because we had the ESSR dollars, and one of the allowances of ESSR was paying our folks with that, with that money. So approximately $1 million, what we did was we ran a levy in Fund IV and generated $1 million in local dollars. And then the money that we took out of the general fund with that 40 cents, and that 40 cents supported, we put it in ESSR dollars. We essentially cut the strings from ESSR $2 and put $1 million in the bank approximately. So then in FY '23, this is not what I'm proposing tonight. You'll see here, this is a slide I gave you in the budget workshop because another little nuance of public school finances, we approve a budget before we know what the values are and how much money we're going to receive locally. But I shared this with you, that we thought we might run a 2.65 in the general. Debt service was going to be back down to 99 cents per Proposition 1967, and we would run a healthy amount in capital projects at 81 cents. And so next slide, please. What we're, there's the historic, or excuse me, what I showed you in the budget workshop and then the new, the tax rate runoff of the hearing. Can you just have it again, I'm examining it. Okay, a little blurry there, apologize, but what I'm proposing tonight is 2.75, 2.7587 in incidental, the debt service 99 cents, and in capital projects, 70 cents. So why a little less than 70 cents despite our personal property being taken, $6 million of it being taken off the books? We basically built our budget off of a 4% increase in AV, and we realized 9.8. That was double digits before the $6 million came off, but we still have a really healthy increase, and that's on a non-reassessment year. So we're outpacing the projections for AV growth by a considerable amount. So you'll note down there in the bottom right-hand corner, the total tax levy being recommended tonight is actually less than what we campaigned on. Now, it's a small amount, but certainly we're emphasizing to our folks every year that that's going to be 4.45 or less. And that's what I'll be bringing to you tonight. I think on my next slide, I've got the motion for board reconsider.
Any questions for Dr. Berger? So less taxes than last year. Okay, I need that motion.
So the second.
The motion is second. The motion to set the tax rate levy for the general incidental fund at $2.7587, the rate for capital projects. I'll get to you second, Dave. The rate for the capital projects funded at .70 and the tax rate levy for total debt service at .99. Dave, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. So the total levy is 4.4487, which is less than last year. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I heard 6-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the continuity of services plan.
Yeah, in order to stay eligible for S R 2, and I actually kind of underscored the point that we brought in, $1 million by transferring that levy to Fund IV and bringing in the S R $2 at about a million, we'll do that again in the current fiscal year, FY '23, and it'll be a little more than $1 million. So in the end, we'll have caught over $2 million and cut the strings from the beds to use that at the local discretion. One thing that we have to do is we have to continue to update a wide board of education by formal approval, the continuity of services plan. And that plan is very similar to the previous one that you approved, and I noted the significant changes, and that is it of that plan. You looked at those two, there was very little difference between the two.
Any questions on the continuity of services plan? Any motion to approve the continuity of services plan?
So moved, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I heard 6-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the EC, Early Childhood and Parenting as Teachers Evaluation. Dr. Berger?
Can I hold that to Ms. Brooks? Take us through?
Sure. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out in the report that I submitted. Last year, we added, or we had a total of five district-wide screenings. We were having one in the fall and one in the spring. We just didn't seem to be capturing any of the student, or a lot of the students that were going into kindergarten. So in talking with Kami, we added three more for a total of five. And after looking at that from last year, we're still, I think Dawn would attest to this, we're not, there are still some kiddos that we're not getting. I don't know, you know, why we still have some that are coming into kindergarten without being screened. But this year, we are going to, for the first semester, we are going to do monthly screenings. So we constantly have parents calling and asking about the preschool program and how they can get their students in or what they need to. We have a lot of student, parents that call and ask how, you know, what they need to do to get their child ready to go to kindergarten. So by having those monthly screenings, they don't have to wait till, you know, if we have the fall one already. So we're hoping that helps. Our numbers did go up a little bit on the number of visits with being able to get back into the home. Last year, they were still allowing virtual visits, so there were some that they still did. But this year, we're going to get the majority of the ones in the home. There's still some families that aren't wanting to, you know, to have them in the home. So we'll still offer that virtual, but. Um, let's see here. Look at that. We really upped our efforts on reaching out to preschool programs and any students that were living in Wright City, but maybe going to Warrenton, getting in there and screening those kiddos as well as some of the preschools here, reaching out to those that we knew that were doing in-home daycares to see if, you know, if we could screen those kiddos. So we were able to reach a few more of those. Did you have any questions? Our numbers this year were a little over 50 right now. We have 13 referrals that were referred over the summer and in the last couple of days for kiddos that are wanting to come to the preschool, that the parents have some concerns, or PAT, maybe screen them over the summer with some concerns. So like I always say, you know, the more students that have special education needs, the more role model students we can put in there. And I looked the other day, we have 51 on our waiting list. So that's awesome. Does anybody have any questions?
How do people qualify for the appearance as teachers?
They just have to call and get on the.
They just have to ask?
Yep, we're starting out with two full-time educators. We had, one of our full-time educators come back to the preschool to be a paraprofessional. So the part-time person moved to the full-time. And for tonight, you're going, I have made a recommendation to hire a part-time. So we'll be fully staffed there hopefully next week. And yeah, you just call and tell them when they get on the list, and they'll come. Yes.
So the 51 on the waiting list, when this building becomes a second early childhood, how many of those kids will this building be able to serve? And what will the waiting list be?
Sure, so that's something that we'll need to talk about on how big we're going to make the classrooms. Like our classrooms over there, you can't, you should only have, no more than 20 in the classroom. And really, getting 20 kiddos in the one room over there would be tight. So it just, you know, if we had a regular-sized room, we could have up to 20 in.
But we're still doing half-days over there, right?
Yes.
So we're bringing in, you know, four hours and then break and whatever.
Three. So we have, you know, a caseload in the morning that comes, and then a caseload in the afternoon that comes.
I'm assuming we can do the same, the plan is to do the same over here?
My plan is to have some full-day preschool programs.
Yeah, I think during the campaign, you might remember, I know that's, yeah. No, we kind of, what we wanted, our people, the feedback we got, we want a full-day program. And so we, what we have a campaign on was one, we'd have one component of full-day at least. And certainly, we think that'd be wonderful for, but it's much easier on families.
Right, right. That's, that's a lot of people that call and want to get on the waiting list. When we explain the program to them, they say, oh, I can't, you know, I can't just take off during the middle of the day to come pick up a kiddo and take them somewhere else. So that, that is a reason that when people are calling, that they ask. One of our, in December, when I report on our special ed district report card, one of the areas that the preschool never is able to meet is that we have students that are in a special education setting part of the time and a regular education setting some of the, you know, half of the day. So that once we get a full-time classroom here, we'll be able to, some of those kiddos could go in one classroom in the morning and come to the other in the afternoon, so. Yes.
Where do we market the screening opportunities?
A lot of it online, word of mouth, the other schools send out our flyer. Trying to think where else, I mean, we put, like, I don't know. But yeah, the library, you know, hanging up a poster in different, you know, businesses. Kami goes around to a lot of events that they have at the park or, you know, kind of recruiting for students for the program. And there's always, you know, information about the screening.
I just wondered if we could utilize some of our community partners to, like, you know, collaborate with what you guys are doing. But, you know, maybe our food can be agreed.
Yeah.
And for our viewers and stuff to help get the word out to some of our folks that we might be missing and, you know, make sure it's, whatever language is maybe.
But, yeah.
Definitely I can reach out.
You know, Dawn and I were talking today about just looking at, on how our building goal at the Early Childhood Center last year was letter recognition, having all of our students that were going to kindergarten knowing their letters. And looking at that data that Dawn and I, you know, everyone, you know, was, looking at my data at the end of the year, all of our students went up from where they were at the beginning of the year. And I know Dawn, you said even last year, the students that came into kindergarten, having been at the preschool, were very successful and just getting acclimated to school and academic.
This year, with the kindergarten exploration, we actually just compiled all the data tonight. That's why we put it a little bit late. But we have a much higher group coming in. And a lot of it, I shared it with Kelly, so we're going to sit down and start looking at now which ones were in our early childhood, which ones have had some exposure, maybe in another daycare, and start seeing where and what's, how, what's going on there. I know Kelly and her team has really partnered with us in creating a curriculum that supports fun learning but academic-based, and we're seeing some huge results with that. So that's exciting, that that data is our baseline data we've never had before. And it's pretty, it's pretty cool to see four days in, and our teachers are like, we know these kids, and we know what they need. So it's, it was exciting tonight.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Do you need an approval for that? That's his report. All right, next item is transportation evaluation. Dr. Berger?
Dr. Wayne, please. Yeah, in our report there, it talks about our goal is to keep the safe, efficient, and timely manner when we're transporting kids. As Dr. Berger mentioned earlier, we had 1,150 kiddos riding the buses last year. Want to make note about the other number right there, the 35 trips and activities per month. So every district across the nation is having issues with busing and transportation. And so we are in a better spot right now, this year, than we were last year with bus drivers, which is a good thing. The thing that hurts us is all of the activities and trips. Just like in the fall and the spring, we have a lot of activities that need to go during the route times, and so it makes it difficult. So Jeff is working with Bo in middle school and high school to make sure that we try to balance that, we're not double routing kids and things like that. So that's one of the challenges that we face right now is just having enough assets and bus drivers besides the normal routes. Just trying to think what else I want to tell you about that. As Doc mentioned, I hate to say this number, I think we're about 150 more on the buses than we are, but it's four days in, so we'll see how that, I'll have a better number next month. We'll know where we're at that way. I was really nervous at this time last year. We were bringing on Echo Ride, if you remember. It was our first year, we've had a good year with them, very happy with them. One of the things I've noticed is just, we used to have a lot of assets down during the year, for whatever reason. And our assets are newer, plus to the same make and model, and our assets are newer plus to the same make and model, so it makes it a little easier when they do break down to get parts and and that's been an issue sometimes, getting parts the past year, but that's been better. Um, trying to think what else I want to tell you about the buses.
You can answer Aaron's question now about covering routes over an hour.
I I wanted to say that's the next. I'm going to keep her in suspense.
I liked this one on the accident, I thought that was, yeah, I liked that.
Sounds good, yeah. Um, I don't think I have anything else, yeah.
We still pay for monitors?
Yeah, we um, so right now, we we really try to have monitors on the east buses because we have kids on there a long time, plus they're itty-bitties. And so uh, we have uh probably about four or five more that we need. And you know, Dawn's been good about reaching out to her parents, you know, we'd love to have parents just ride with their kids and we'll drop them off with their kids, we'll, we'll work out anything we need to work out. Um, so that's one of the things we're facing is bus monitors, we're down about four or five from what we need. We have all of our sped monitors covered, but we need some help in these.
Now, seriously, is there any other questions for Dr. Wayne? Okay. Look forward to updates. Next one is uh, Dr. Wayne, Dr. Wayne for bus routes.
Yeah, so bus routes, we are starting the year with twenty-six bus routes. We ended last year with twenty-six, uh, just what Kelly was talking about a few minutes ago. We anticipate going at least one or two more bus routes, um, probably first semester and second semester based on her um screening more kids and we'll have more EC routes, so that's probably going to increase, just so you know. Um, we are seeing like, for some reason, you know, we used to run two or three buses, kind of like on Howard W Incline Village, and now we need just to have certain buses just for Incline Village, that seems that population seems to be growing. Um, a lot of our kiddos, so uh, Aaron always asks about, you know, time on the, or student time on the buses. And so uh, I had Jeff break it down for me, we have some routes that are as low as seventeen minutes, twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty, forty-two. And we have some that are, you know, we try to have that sixty-minute threshold, we're at fifty-seven, fifty-seven, fifty-nine. And these are the east ones, some of those where our kiddos are on there. Um, unfortunately, we do have one route that is over our threshold of sixty minutes, it's at sixty-three minutes. We actually um, we go from the bus barn to the first house, it takes us twenty-one minutes to get there. And uh, they, from talking with the dad there, when they bought the house, they actually thought they were in the um Lincoln County School District, they're about five minutes from the middle school out there. And so those two kiddos are on the bus for sixty-three minutes. Um, so that's the only kiddos that we have over the sixty minutes right now, but we do have that.
And those are east kiddos right now?
Uh, west kiddos, west kiddos, yeah. Um, I'm trying to think what else I want to tell you about that. We talked about the monitors, that's what we need really right now, we're in a pretty good spot with bus drivers. And in fact, uh, we're looking to have a couple of our teachers help us out with that this year that we haven't had in the past. Some of our newbies uh have their CDLs and they're going to help us uh with like band trips or football or things like that, so. Uh, we feel good about that. But I just want you to know, we will probably add more routes as needed as the year goes on. And then next one, bottom, better feel on or rad, ridership wise.
Okay, any, any questions for Dr. Wayne regarding the bus routes?
When you add those routes, are those going to be early childhood or you think everywhere, so it's not going to be able to take any load off of any of these?
No, like right now, we, some of our west routes on paper have, like when I see them on the buses, I don't see this many kids on those buses. So uh, usually after the first couple of weeks, we're going to see if we can reroute some stuff or do something with our normal routes. But as the year goes on, Kelly's going to have more kids, a lot of them need buses, so we're going to figure out. And there's just no way around the EC ones.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three bus routes.
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion second, any more, Dave, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, uh, is the motion second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard six zero. Real estate, so this is one of the few times where we did this in open session because there is no negotiation, it's done. And so um, there's no consideration for our closed session, so. Uh, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, and Dr. Wayne also on this at that point has done a really good job with it.
So right now, we are asking for your uh approval to sell that point seven seven three acre lot that's directly behind Sinek Library. If you give us that approval, we would like to have a closing date that week after Labor Day and finalize it. But we we need your approval and that document so we can move forward with the closing.
The, the cost that we're getting is fifty thousand dollars, so the motion needs to uh make sure it says that.
I'll make that motion to pay or to sell that point seven seven acres for fifty thousand dollars to the library.
Second.
Yeah, it was point seven seven three.
Seven seven three, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, is the motion second, any more discussion?
Do we know what a um, what their timeline looks like with ours?
I I don't think it's going to be solely, it's going to be Hardest Way ground in the winter and thinking maybe in the spring we'll sever the ground.
Dave, any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay.
What, real quick, sorry, have you seen the latest plans? I mean, are they doubling in size or?
Basically, um, kind of between our drainage ditch and where they are right now, they're trying to have a, a lane for some parking behind and then maybe add on the back of the building with some parking in the back there.
Oh, and the other question that came up was the retention pond?
So that's part of our contract with them that we, we worked in the contract that if there's any kind of um.
Negative impact?
Yeah, they're on the hook.
Sorry, Dr. Wayne. They're on the hook, but they're.
And not us.
They agree just pretty, they've been great to work with. Uh, I want to clarify one thing, I talked to Stephen Campbell fairly recently and I think probably since you have an opportunity. Uh, they have, they are not, they don't have a plan to to expand anytime on the buildings. So uh, I think they, you know, I don't know if it's cost or what it is, uh, but uh, have you, have they reported that? I just didn't want to.
I think they've got a couple of things going, they've got another one that they're expanding on too, so I think it's a, yeah.
And then uh, what was my second thing, maybe I didn't have second thing, what did I just clarify?
Timeframe, area, spell timeframe.
Yeah, timeframe was, yeah, so Stephen told me they did not have anything like planned to to expand anytime soon, so. But they want to secure the land, so they had it.
Okay, any, any more discussion? I think we have a motion second already, so all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I heard six zero. Okay, high school update, uh, Eric? I'm assuming you're ready to give it?
He's driving, we're excited to to bring this to, to look for board approval on side plan and floor plans. Uh, I'm going to maybe inject a few times here like I do with Eric, but I'll start by saying, I think we were able to reduce some scope and really not much was sacrificed. And so Eric will detail those things and uh, go ahead, Eric, and I'll maybe chump in on it, I'll try to step on your, your next year.
Okay, so last time I was here, we got our third-party estimate and including um, estimate for the alternates. Um, so after we had some discussions, we, we've tried to work through some numbers and find some reductions where we could. Um, so go to the first slide or the second slide. Um, the, the new high school, phase one, the base bid amount that we're expecting, well, before all the markups, we're at thirty-three, six. Um, we moved the um cafeteria into the base bid. Um, we did some reductions on the building for some kind of common areas and um some green space uh that we're going to develop higher than just grass, uh, wood-skin turf and some things like that. Um, so it can, it ended up being a wash, the number's not that different, um, but the cafeteria is now base bid.
Let me clarify that because if you remember, when we did that, we said, we're going to put that in base bid, expand the cafeteria, do everything to make the cafeteria. If you, I apologize if you play on this later, you see here, I can rehearse. Uh, the reduction uh that we made in that commons area, were you to detail that out in that side plan?
I can show it to you, yeah.
Play the part, go ahead, yeah, thank you.
Um, so east elementary, um, um, didn't change much. Renovation to the existing high school, I'll show you on a later slide. Uh, we found a way to save some dollars by keeping more of the existing school. Um, we know it's not all in great shape, but if we leave some, certain parts of it, in particular the IT server room um that feeds all the district buildings, um, from that, that main fiber um input, um, we're going to save some dollars. Moving this building into that building was a little bit less renovation over there. Um, the example I give is Henry's office, if his office ends up in a classroom, that may be the way to save some dollars. So we've done some manipulation of, of that building. I have a slide, it is not all figured out, I don't want to make you think that's exactly what we're getting, but it's a lot more of the building we can save versus demo. Make sense? Okay. Um, and then existing remission of this building hasn't really changed. Um, AD fees escalation permitting, we haven't changed those numbers um, other than they get affected by the reductions of the, the um, renovation of existing high school. So percentages of those, bottom dollar here is the fifty-one, three ninety-one.
And that, we have to remember that's an estimate because we have one.
So my, my question would be on the, um, I'd be interested to see the plans for the renovated existing high school. Um, just because I know when we originally started talking about this, we were talking about the maintenance to maintain the existing high school and the costs associated with that. So I don't, you know, I don't want to see it to a point where we renovated the high school and we're still maintaining stuff that's old and shouldn't be and you guys did a lovely job at the high school, but um, people should walk through our high school, it, it needs to be renovated or not down. Um, so um, yeah, I, I just, you know, yeah. So I, I'd be interested in what, how much of the building are, were not tearing down and the costs associated with maintaining that.
I will show you our schematic plan, but I will tell you, I think we mentioned this last time, we're bidding the new high school in east in uh October, November. The design of what happens with this building and existing building is shifted now. We probably won't know that for a while exactly out and how much is staying going and how much is actually getting renovated, so.
You get a pretty good idea from his image though.
You will, but.
Uh, Ms. Williams, you and I have been locked up on this, uh, and I know the board knows my sentiment on that, I wanted to get it uh, MO2. Uh, there's just a reality that that tech space that I know Eric will expand on here, that tech space was becoming a booger for us because it had to be a standalone uh tech hut. And this allows us not to have money poured into the, the, the transition of the new uh, the tech services coming in there. So you'll kind of, you'll expand on the work, get ahead of you a little bit here, but.
It's okay. All right, so uh, next slide. So the alternates, um, the cafeteria is out of it, we still have the stadium um for football and the track and then the performance gym and then the baseball softball field.
Does it not necessarily want to include the, the restroom that I was mentioning?
Yes. The baseball softball fields, this number is our alternate that has the restrooms and everything. We still have a base number in our base high school number that covers the grading and a grass field, basically. Um, the, kind of the basics. This gives us until turf lighting, restrooms, all that infrastructure. Okay. Um, cafeteria zero. Um, then the adjustments to the percentages for Patrick fees and permitting and then our total is the sixty-five. I think it was sixty-seven last time we were in here?
Fifty-six. Almost, yeah, yeah, almost, yeah.
So some reduction and we are still working on places to, to cut. Um, we still have the three alternates which are sizable, um, our base bid is still coming in within. Next slide. Okay, so I was alluding to this a little bit, high school in east bids out um this fall. Renovation of the existing high school and this, this building for the second ECC will be bid the next, not the next fall, but in the fall of twenty twenty-four when the high school is being completed. So east will be done, the new high school will be almost finished and we will bid out those two buildings together um, anticipation of contractors starting for those in the spring of twenty-five. And it's a domino thing, so the new high school has to be done before that high school can start and then that has to be done for this building to start. Staggering of it should work out pretty well um for contractors. Um. Oh, so high school in east, um, two separate packages, drawing specs and separate. So if we can get a larger contractor that can do the high school, maybe they want to do a bid for east and do them both, but we don't want to exclude a smaller contractor on east. So if we can get a big contractor on um to bid for both of them and we get a small contractor, gives us a better number on east, we want to be able to take that.
So one of the things I asked Chris about was the economies of scale. So to get the bigger contractor out, it's, then he has, he has less duplicate cost because of his overhead and stuff like that. Um, if he, if he or she does both the high school and east. Um, so when it comes time, I mean, I'm, so when we get these packages, I mean, I, I mean, will they have an option to say, I can do both of them for this and then basically, and then provide one for the high school and one for east separate?
Yeah.
Because, because you're going to start, because what's going to happen, I think, is you're going to have to start doing some more number crunching. And they may come in a little higher on that, on the east, but overall, if you do them both together, it's cheaper because, you know, because of the economies of scale and we're not duplicating, you know, construction managers or whatever else.
Yes, so we'll, we'll ask for them to give us an explanation if they get both projects. What, what would the benefit be? Will there be a discount of a certain amount of dollars? And we'll look at the numbers for all the bids plus the alternates and come up with which contractors really have the best number. Because you could have a base number that's high, but alternates are all low, and that person actually is where we want to be. So yes, there will be some number um self-stressy work when we get those bids. And, and we will, we will ask for several explanations of what can we do to get a lower number? If you take, if we get you both projects, if they bid on both.
Okay, I'll stop there. Hey, Dave, you been hearing all this?
Yeah, I have.
Do you have any questions at this moment?
No, I do not.
All right, sorry, Eric.
It's okay. So some of the other things we've been looking at is to, besides that, to, to get the most competitive bids is warehouse space for contractors, um, some places store stuff. So they get a bid for mechanical equipment, they place an order, we don't need it right away. Or can they get it here and say it's a ten-month lead time? Can they get it in ten months even though they don't need it for fifteen months? Is there a place to put it? Um, so that they can order their stuff earlier and lock in on those lower numbers before something bumps up again like what happened last spring with the mechanical systems. Um, alternates.
I'm sorry, do we have that today?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
At least Jeremy has committed, we'll see. Our new warehouse.
That warehouse.
New warehouse.
We'll do what we have to do, yeah. Great. Only for thirty minutes.
It's just a nice, it will be a nice thing to offer them up as, as a place to put things. The site is fairly large, so we do have room there for things that can sit out, but not everything can sit out tonight.
And I'm ensuring that our assurance will cover all that, right?
Talk with music, like those.
Right.
Okay, and then the alternates, um, we just let the three alternates that are helping with us figure out exactly where our pricing will come in. Next slide, okay, so. This is the base bid of the new high school. Um, I think you guys are all familiar with the layout, but this is the main entry. This is the uh bus drop-off visitor entry at the front of the building. Parking lot here, parking lot comes out over here, and parking lot down here. Um, main education wing, this is the library. If you come down the hallway, we used to have a little thing right here in the middle. Um, it was a breakout space, it was the size of maybe a classroom and a half. Um, and then around it was. And then around it was a turf field. The turf field opened up into the multipurpose weight room for athletics. The gra, it will still open up, but it'll just be grass. And then the, the commons area we talked through and we think there's other places we can have those, those breakout things without building a room and a half in the middle there.
Those common areas are pretty important for us in, in, you know, modern schools. You can remember we recessed out those instructional or academic half the square there. We recessed out those hallways at virtually no cost to capture some area for some collaboration for our kids, so it was good. We just never really had a great plan for the common area, we liked it. We knew it was going to be something special. We even thought the coffee shop there one time, you remember? Then it made sense to get the coffee shop closer to the library. And, you know, coffee shop, everybody knows, we valued that at a really, really high level. So again, it was, you know, square footage out, but a pretty easy sacrifice, so we didn't have a firm plan for it.
I, I would assume that the library would have a fair amount of space where small groups can gather and work on contracts.
Yes, and it, and it has a kind of a workroom flasher here in the one corner that can work as a, as a space like that. The, and it's not like it's gone, gone, it can happen in the future. The way the design is, that's still an option. It's just for now, it's a way we can carve out some dollars fairly simply. And not, not really affect academic spaces, which is what we need. Okay, so next slide please.
This is quite a bit of new information before, obviously, so you'll want to be detailed on this.
Okay, so. From the beginning, I'll say, we've had a softball field and a baseball field. Base bid was grass and fencing. The, talking to the staff, they would prefer to have a turf infield. Basically gives you a ton more playing days. So they play softball and baseball on the same field. So we went through the, looking at the dollars of what it would cost to do turf and whether or not we save enough by not doing the softball field and doing turf infield, so it's usable for both sports for more days and still get enough use out of it and stay within the same budget. Half, the infield turf versus this field without lights came in at a similar number. Not exactly the same, but within reason. Talked through it with staff and we are just going to grasp this and seed it. We're going to design the alternate to have turf infield, lights, the restrooms, dugouts, press box and storage all in one field.
We talked about, talked to staff, obviously both coaches and athletic director worked with the actions. They kind of created the, the idea. We kept on kind of kicking the can and finally dug in and see if it was possible back to the group not to be so delayed and we worked with it. And pretty excited about that.
And the, the grading that we'll do here will allow for you guys to do another, a softball field or another baseball field in the future. Or use it as a certain sparking if you have a need of that.
Point out where exactly what fast lane is on that.
Fast lane is up here.
Up there, okay.
More to the, you know.
North.
Northwest, but it's, it's past here, I don't think it extends.
Oh, you're right.
This is on the other side of the grid, if the fast lane goes that far.
This is on the other side?
It is. You'll see a site plan here in upcoming slide, they'll show it and all come together.
Any questions on this design?
He and I were talking about, you know, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter, but how you would have put the girls' fence in and all that. Cause you know, before we had to choose separate fields and we had to worry about that. So now the girls are going to have to play with, uh, what are really used fencing for them.
So yeah, they'll have the, the almost temporary fence that they put up.
That's my biggest concern.
On one field. Yeah, I mean, that's true. Uh, next slide. So this is the, the overall site plan. So your baseball field is over there, fast lane is here. These are three entries into the site, staff parking, visitor parking, student parking. Football stadium, track and the sacrifice field. Question, I don't know if you guys have seen some of this.
And the greenhouse is still over there?
Yes, so the greenhouse is off next to Ag behind the cafeteria, kitchen.
But you will remember that we pulled that out of the project so we could do that to enhance the crown. And that'll, that'll be seventy, seventy-five, twenty-five, so we can have that.
Yeah, we're demarcating the space for it and sending utilities to us, like that power.
By the line of the greenhouse is out of the base bid?
It won't be in the base bid, no. Just the utilities to it are.
We will apply for it near, and bring right in.
And he said something to me the other day about potentially bidding the asphalt sometime in the future, not part of the base project.
We've talked about it and we've talked about how we can mitigate.
Because if that way they don't charge us, you'll have to estimate how much asphalt it will be and stuff like that.
Yeah, because they don't, they're not going to need it for a year and a half, right? We haven't finalized how we're going to do that yet, but we are talking about that.
Is it primarily because we just won't need the parking lots?
We won't need them during construction. They'll, they'll have gravel that they'll use for the construction crews and their equipment. It'll just get torn up anyway. So yeah, we don't want to pour asphalt until closer to the end of the project because of the prices of that.
Volatility in prices, that was much more of an attractive idea. If that levels out, we may back off that a little bit. I think, did Art decide three million in asphalt? Is that what his ballpark number was? So I should note that he will be talking to me next week. Give me the number. I think we've spoken, do you remember Jeremy? And who want to go with you? I think it was three million.
It, it is, there's a lot of pavement on, on this project. We have the road and then all the parking lots. Cause we're, part of the alternate is to pave from the bridge and pave this part parking lot to down by baseball. So there's quite a bit of asphalt.
And asphalt is included in base bid?
And then the other thing that Chris and I talked about was the, the city requirement for us to enhance Ralca Road.
Yes.
Where do you, is that part of that base bid too? So that's in there too?
We've got a number for it. The number we have is from the engineers. They're almost finished with our drawings on that. So we'll, we'll have a better idea of what it, that really entails. There was some question on what that meant and where, where it actually landed on Ralca Road. If it was split or if it was one side or not. Any other site questions? Next slide. Okay, so this is the East Elementary. The addition is right here, these four rooms. It's, uh, restrooms, four classrooms and the hallway. But they are all built to storm shelter, I C C five hundred requirements. And they will hold the population of the whole building. We haven't changed anything really, but I think we haven't focused on this that much, but I think we're looking just for acknowledgement and approval that we're continuing on the same path. Is anyone having questions on East?
Some of them have polished concrete floor, like actualized the floor.
Some of it, yes, for, for the hallway. And then the classrooms will have a regular. The, I know we haven't talked about this too much, the road currently, it goes around the building, comes up and comes right through here and then back around. We're relocating that around, not just around this, but we're going farther out into that flat field. So that if, if you guys do need another four classrooms, because there was, we were talking about eight classrooms, that there's room and we don't have to move the road again. Associated cost, so. I don't think we had talked about that previously, but there, there'll be room to add on another four classrooms. And those four classrooms will not have to be storm sheltered because this will be big enough to handle that, those kids also. And some rule changes in the future. Right now, there will be four additional classrooms plus the existing population. Next slide, it's a fun one. Okay. So this is partial view of your existing high school, part of this demoed away and gone. This is the, what the, the main gym is and cafeteria. This part we were always kind of keeping. This part here, we were going to cut off and get rid of. Along with the part that comes down this way, the wings that come out and cross to it. In order to find some dollars, the main serves for, it's not this purple one, but right in this corner, little L shaped one is the main server room for all buildings in the district. That includes East. The fiber comes into there and runs to East. It runs to West, it runs to here, it runs to all the buildings. And the new high school will need to run to that location. If we demo it, then we have to move all of those items. So in order to, to not do that, we're going to, or plan on doing is keeping it and just running the new high school to that location. The renovation in that room itself might, it might be a little bit, just to make a little bit more room. But once the high school's out of here, we have, we should have the ability to do that. Things that we haven't talked through is the exact entry that's going to be for admin, you know, are they going to come in here, are they going to come in here? There's a couple of options. The boardroom is going to be in this red area. That would be probably the heaviest renovation, is building a new boardroom in the next, what's now the band cafeteria area.
So is Andrea on board with that in terms of her?
Andrea was always concerned about that, that part of the project, concerned. And.
I, I can tell you she's happier with this. She's less concerned.
She was concerned about the downtime, you know, unforeseen extending that downtime. You know, you just can't do anything about it.
But in terms of, but you know, I guess the question is that, does that room have enough space and it's growth? Cause I don't think, I don't know what, you got some racks in there or whatever.
It does, I don't know if it has room for growth in its current wall construction, but once the high school's out of there, we will be able to enlarge. But move some of those walls out of the way so that they have more room. Cause this is, the pink area is kind of an open faculty lounge area that we can use pretty easily if we remove that wall between it and I T, actual server room. The purple rooms are classrooms, pink purple. Those would most likely just become admin spaces for staff coming from here to go there. If we do minimal finishes and stuff like that, that, that would be the most cost effective way to do it. Eventually, I'm sure that will change for the district, but, but right now that's kind of the concept. We kind of took a step back from where we were, back to a conceptual way, but I think in our estimation, we believe this is going to save quite a lot, a lot. Forget the number, I think it was around a half million, six hundred thousand dollars.
Dave, you have any questions?
The only, the only question I had when he was talking about the expansion or the, the changes in Ralca Roads, did he have a number? Did he say, I thought it was a cost estimated with that?
I did not, but we're holding two hundred thousand dollars in there for just the Ralca Road piece of it. For that term, right?
Okay, thank you. No, I have no other questions.
Does anybody have any other, any questions for Eric before he concludes?
I mean, I guess mine would be, are, are we comfortable with, with this, with the high school plan? What, what other renovations would we need to do? Like does this take care of our H V A C system or, and the lighting and all those things? So that we're not dumping a bunch of money in there every month to keep the current system running?
So I've talked to the engineers and we're going to have to get into it a little bit more, but the idea would be some of the units are just end of life or not functioning. So there's going to have to be some new mechanically units, but with the, the load being less and just office personnel and that full classroom of kids, we should be able to make it work with less units in, in general. And some of the lighting needs to be upgraded and some of it will probably be a little bit cute with how it is. It just depends on the room, like the boardroom and this, the community space is probably going to look brand new. But some of the other spaces aren't going to, we're just going to try to do as minimal as we can. You know, uh, keep it within reason so that everyone's having their space, but and call it. Dump too much money into building a bunch of walls that we don't need.
There are a couple of things it does, I mean, you can see it there, but you can overlook it too. It does come with the new facade from the front of the, of the gymnasium, but will then be the front of the gymnasium, which is, you know, I think pretty important. Uh, and the space for the school needs health clinic just gets basically shelled out because there's a grant for that that whether it's our partner or us, either one of us can apply for it. And it's almost a title level and so I feel like we can capture that. So their, the plan here is to shell that space out.
Is that your last slide?
I think it is the last slide.
So what do you need from us tonight?
Um, I think we need approval on the baseball field as a, same baseball softball with the turf as the alternate. And then East, the layout of East being.
Well, I saw three things on, in the slides.
What's the third one?
The third, first one was layout of a high school. Floor plan, floor kind of high school. I, I saw that, I saw East and I saw the, the baseball softball field combination. Those were the three things I think as I read through your slides.
Yes.
You kind of had it noted on there and said, need board approval, you know, so is there anything else that you need tonight?
I don't think so.
So I've got, I thought, I thought I drafted Eric as motion to approve the floor in site plan for East Elementary, floor remade, new Wright City High School floor plan, competition baseball softball field and existing Wright City High School. So I guess the existing Wright City High School is not very far developed. I think the motion can still apply. Uh, you're going to see revisions to that, but they're going to be essentially, they're, they're pretty, it's going to be, that's the framework for it.
The framework of it, if we can get approval that we're going to keep the I T server room, that helps us on the high school part of, of the.
So that motion up there meets your needs?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have one that's going to be a silly question, but. Right now we use the same field softball, baseball.
Correct.
But we have to put in, in the, for baseball, we have to put in a mound, right? Because baseball, you use a mound.
Right. Yeah, it's all just moving dirt.
So it's not, that won't be a big deal for.
Turf fields come with like an actual.
It's right, it's, it's a portable turf.
So, so we're approving the layout, but according to this, we're not bidding anything for the high school or East until next, until fall of twenty-four?
No, until fall. No, until fall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The high school.
Old high school.
Yeah, old high school. Existing building is twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's correct. I'm sorry, wrong answer. Yeah.
So Heidi, you gonna ask your question? You asked me two months ago.
Gosh, Dan, why don't you put me off?
It was about, it was about the, uh, the materials, the finishing materials and the floors and all that. The cost of that, you remember that?
Oh, yeah. I mean, can we save costs? I hope that we've been looking at this. That are we saving any cost on, you know, the materials that we were looking at before versus other materials that might be able to achieve or just for those finishes? I mean, I want this to look very nice, but I think that would probably be costing. I don't know if you guys have looked at that.
It's been discussed on the field and some again, some of the big ones.
Sorry, Austin.
Yeah, we, so we do, um, the cost analysis of materials, especially flooring because it's such a high maintenance thing depending on what you pick versus the initial install cost. So we're using, I think, LVT for most of your, your classrooms and hallways and stuff like that. It's, it's a little bit higher than VCT, but it doesn't get waxed, it doesn't have the same maintenance year after year so you don't have as much staff time maintaining it, which is something that continues after year after year. It's not the highest cost with the lowest, you know, overall.
Just a random question. How long do you, how, what, what number do you pick to like determine that? I mean, you talking ten years, twenty years, thirty years?
Depends on the material. It does. It depends on the material. So Torazo is a super high cost at the beginning, but it lasts a hundred years, right? So over time, it's the most effective, but most of us aren't putting it in. You may put it in a, you know, big central area, but they're not putting it in every hallway anymore. They used to do that, but not anymore. So that's how we do it. It's, it's a, it is a timeframe. So VCT lasts a long time. It will register.
Right, sure.
And in the Ag area versus the cafeteria versus the classroom, they get different wear and tear too. But the, the LVT is very good, wears well, and it's, it's easy to maintain.
What is LVT?
Luxury, I don't know. Sorry. It, it's, it's the same kind of thing. It's a square, glued down. Very similar materials, just a little bit more technology in it. It's not, it's not brand new. It's been, we've been using it for quite a few years now. Well-tested, easy. Shingles versus metal roof. A lot of sloped roofs. You do a metal standing seam roof. We've gone to shingles and TPO.
We've had really bad luck with metal roofs, haven't we?
We have. Longevity wise, yeah, you know.
Well, passion wheels. I know the story.
That's a thing we looked at and we, we did change that in the last few months to go shingles or TPO and then on the slotted roof. The flatter ones have TPOs. The shingles won't. You can't get one, you know, if they're too flat.
Now like side brick stone and, you know, mixing it up?
Rick, Rick, there's some areas that we're doing a fiber cement type product. So it's a cementitious board that's screwed to the, almost like siding or rain screen system, if you're familiar with that. We're doing that in areas like the upper parts of the gables that won't get beat against by longroofs or anything like that. And then some areas where we know we're gonna have future expansion. So brick's gonna last, again, seventy-five years, but you're gonna have an addition here, probably within five or ten or fifteen years. Let's not spend money on masonry here. And we want to, it's a change of the look of the building. We don't want it just to look like that. It's long, you know, it's a, it's a one-story building, so it does have some long wings on it.
Thank you, Austin, for mentioning that. I had a couple of conversations about that, but thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Dave, last chance.
No, I'm good. No question.
Okay, the motion to approve the floor and site plans for East Elementary floor room. Can't read that. Edition glasses. Yeah, I got it right here. Motion to approve the floor and site plans for East Elementary floor room ad, new Wright City High School, competition baseball softball field, and existing Wright City High School. Where's the football field in that bid?
It's part of the base gym.
Oh, wouldn't be part of the base bid. I may, did you, you need that too, probably? Would you say, call out, is it affordable for that?
I think it's all part.
What's that?
It's all part of.
Well, we have a baseball softball field in that too.
Don't you just say that point. It's not that, that changed. Both have a change there.
All right, so, so you're okay with that football field?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need that motion that's on the board up there.
So moved, second.
Okay, who, I heard so moved twice. Who, who got it first?
Mary.
Okay, Mary and I?
Mary and Eric.
Mary and Eric. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard six zero. Thank you. Okay, up to our consent agenda. Do you still wanna pull FFA?
I do.
Okay, we need to pull item E in the consent agenda. Please quickly look at the employment recommendation. Make sure you're not related to anybody. I'm not relating anybody.
Is this Monica here or is that?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay. Does anybody wanna pull anything else out of the, um, consent agenda other than item E? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, sans item E.
So moved, second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Alice, item E.
Yeah, um, my concern here, I know that we generally have a one to seven ratio of, you know, one, um, parent, teacher, adult with seven kids, but I'm always concerned when there's only one. I've been in the situation before where I had, you know, one kid at the hospital and then the rest of them are, God knows where. So that's my concern with it. I would like to have another, another adult person there.
So on the bus that they're gonna go on, Sidewalk is going in two sponsors from the field. So, you know, not direct sponsor, yeah, there would be four adults with that group.
Do they all stay in the same hotel?
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure that's the same.
Can we confirm that, please?
I will double check on that, but they're all, yeah, they're, for sure.
Where would she come from on that? No.
She, what?
The new manager.
She was.
With you, okay, so, awesome.
So she, yeah.
She has the relationships, yeah. Please confirm that they all stay in the same hotel, cuz I'm with Alex, you know. Oh, you don't have to do that right now. Tomorrow is fine. Tomorrow is fine. Forget about it tomorrow.
Well, well, the, the serious, the serious question is, let's say the answer is no, they're not staying in hotel. Would that, would that change your vote?
I want one more.
Yeah, so I guess we gotta wait, see if we get an answer.
I guess that, that's not though. October, October.
We are all in the same hotel. Somebody's watching, so.
She said that?
Confirmed, yeah, she said that.
We're good.
I had her on the hand.
She must be listening on Facebook.
That, that is fun. You know, it's just, that's funny.
Okay, okay, so you okay with that?
Yep.
We'll stick together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the overnight field trip for FFA.
So moved, second.
There's a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard six zero. Dave, are you gonna FaceTime in or are you just gonna let go for a closed session?
No, I'm gonna wing go.
Okay, so I'm not gonna ask you to, to vote to go into closed session? So if you want, if you wanted to hang on now, you're welcome to.
All right, thank you.
Get feeling better. Get feeling better.
You bet.
Okay, um, I need a motion to go into closed session in order to discuss six ten oh twenty-one. Three, legal actions, cause of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public government body or its representatives and its attorneys. Fourteen, records which are protected from disposure by law. Need a motion to go in closed session?
So moved, second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? Vote call, strength of Austin. Yes?
Yes.
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 I heard five zero. Let's take a five-minute, uh...